Okay, it's seven o'clock.
That's true.
We'll call this meeting to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Hampton?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Washburn?
Here.
Logston?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Okay, our third order of business, discussion and action to approve the T-hanger bid specs and authorize staff to proceed with the advertisement and receiving of bids. First of all, did everybody get it, did the packet with all the information?
Yes.
Uh... Jodon?
I'm assuming you...
I've, uh, I've currently gone through everything that was talked about, appears to be those documents. As a once-over for anything that I may have missed, that I haven't, I didn't get back, even get back with it, I didn't have a chance to get back with him, I had the city engineers looking over, looking over everything. Some of the major concerns was the floor, the foundation, everything should be sloping to drain, where it can drain out, and there should be a drain, there would be a drain, a pipe drain. In the middle of the area between the hanger and the taxiway, am I saying that right?
The hangar and taxiway in between each ramp, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, and then in each area, there's about six or seven drains, I think, along each side, where we're draining out to the open field, the drainage ditch. Unless there's some specifics in the verbiage for the electrical that I may have missed. I believe everything is, that we had talked about at the last meeting has been incorporated.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, on, uh, in the section where it talks about bifold door motors, says electric bifold, bifold door operator shall be a top-mounted operator on the center of the truss. Is that on the top, at the top of the door, where the motor's on a top-mounted?
Could, could be, I think, whatever, whatever language is in there for the motor, I think it just needs, or for the door even.
Says electric bifold door operator shall be a top-mounted operator on the center of the door truss.
I don't know that we'd want to be that specific, would we?
I'm, I'm wondering too, I mean, I think we'd like to have, if a company comes in with options of different doors, it'd be nice to look at those and not be dedicated to...
Yeah.
Well, and any of, any of that could certainly be taken care of with a field change to the plans.
Well, the, all of the bifold doors that I looked at, the motors on bottom, not top-mounted.
Okay.
Right. And then it's, it's also...
So you can work on it. So you can work on it. Yeah, I mean, I, if that can be field changed, well then...
Yeah, that can be a field change to take care of any minor inconsistencies.
A field change as far as once construction starts, or prior to?
Prior to.
Because I think, okay, because I think we need to change that before it goes out for bid.
I mean, if it was, if they were to come in and say, "We've got a better option, we think this would work better," and if we, because we do field changes all the time during the construction process.
Well, I'm just saying that you wouldn't want to send that out to twenty different people to have them start bidding it with that language, I think you'd want to...
I think we'd want that out.
To strike that, or have it, you know, option, you know, door options, any options are...
A field change without allowing an option. Yeah, most, all of the electric bifold doors that I've seen, I can't think of any that had a top-mounted motor.
I haven't, yeah, I haven't seen one.
You know, you see that on a garage door.
Yeah.
And then also on the same paragraph, it says power connection shall be a heavy-duty 230-volt plug for easy connection, is it just going to be a...
Plug in, set hardwired.
Yeah, the reason I was asking is that all of the hangar doors on the airport have provisions for a generator hookup. Because in any event of emergency, you know, whether it's a major disaster here...
Right.
Somebody needs to get to Oklahoma City in a hurry, to a hospital, or to whatever. But if it's, if it's just a plug, then it can be unplugged and plugged into a generator. But I, I think we need to have provisions for, and a way to open that door in an emergency.
Most of the new ones do, built into them.
Okay.
But that may have to be, that may be wording that you want to make sure that it's specified.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I know the hydraulic doors have a, have two jacks so you can plug a tractor into them, and use the tractor's hydraulics to open them in the power outage.
And then, I didn't see any provisions to specify whether there was one meter, or each hangar was individually metered, and maybe that's not, I was looking for it in the package and didn't see it.
I, I didn't notice that either, but I, there's, we need to clarify, make sure there's wording, because it may just be in there that each unit separately metered or something, I don't know, I, I didn't see it, but, have you, Jodon?
Yeah, man, there's another place where it says bifold doors and all operating components shall be manufactured by the building manufacturer.
That limits it.
That limits it.
Yeah, I don't know if any, well, I'm sure there probably is.
Hey Curtis, I'm fixing to put you on speakerphone, they've got questions about the bid packet on the electrical. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, some of the questions they've got is on, um, on SS 291-5, the bifold door motors, says it's, it says it's a top-mounted motor on center of door trusses. So does that mean it's mounted at the top of the door?
Say that one more time.
The bid specs say, "Electric bifold door operator shall be a top-mounted operator on center of door trusses," is that mean it's at the top of the motor?
Yeah, it's the top center of the door.
Well, they, in their question, should that not be on the bottom?
Most of the door manufacturers I've seen, they're on the bottom.
I can, let me confirm with the, I, I know our electrical engineer talked to some people at a rectitude, let me verify on that one.
And I don't know, maybe their rectitude door is on the top.
Swice doors are on the bottom.
Yeah.
Wilson doors are on the bottom.
We just thought it might eliminate some options.
Bifold doors are on the bottom.
Just, just some latitude to not tie us into one thing.
Okay.
Since, since we have the potential of different building manufacturers being represented in the bidding.
Okay, we can, we can say, okay.
And, and there's another spot in there on, uh, 290-13.1, where it says the bifold door and all operating components shall be manufactured by the building manufacturer.
Yes.
I, you know, I don't think that needs to be in there, I think we need to take that out, because it may be one, you know, a Butler building with a Wilson door on it, or something.
How about change that to be coordinated with the building manufacturer?
That's fine.
That would be fine. And then are there provisions, um, to hook up a la, uh, emergency generator to open the
My understanding right now is, I'm trying to think, we don't have an emergency generator in the package.
No, we're not.
No, just a, just a plug where you can hook, uh...
If they wanted to bring in their own generator and plug it in in the power outage, can they plug in the door and open it?
Okay, yeah.
In the specs, it states that the, the door plug, has a plug-in to the building?
Yeah.
I mean, if that's the case, then we can plug it into a generator, but if they're hardwired, that makes it more challenging.
I think that's the purpose of that plug, and I have to apologize, I delayed some of this, and I'll verify on that item as well.
Yeah, if it's plug, that'd be, that'd be fine. And then the final thing I have is, uh, there's no provisions, or it doesn't call out whether the, the hangars are metered individually, or metered on one meter.
Uh, it should be called out that there's seven, uh, I mean, nine different meters, one for each unit, and then one for the city.
Okay. Um... I, I may have just missed it.
Yeah, and the way that works, uh, is there's one, I'll, I'll call it the master meter that, um, that, uh, PSO will, will run, and then in the panel, there's, um, many meters that Greg will need to go and read, and that was to save several thousands of dollars' worth of individual PSO meters. Let me figure when you send the monthly, um, tanger employee, they would have a utility bill associated with it. If you're wanting PSO to bill each tenant individually, uh, we need to change that, and that will add, like I said, significant to the project.
By PSO, you mean OG&E?
OG&E.
I, I mean, sorry, yes, OG&E, I'm sorry, that might...
Okay.
Wrong utility, I messed one today.
Okay. Yeah.
But that's probably where that is, you see the one master, um, OG&E meter, and then the contractor's put in the, I'll call them many meters inside the box for each, that will be, uh, regulating each, uh, day.
Hmm. Okay, that's it for me.
Do you have?
Um, probably want to give me a call in the morning, Curtis.
Okay.
Okay? So we can make sure we get, so we can make sure we get these changes, maybe.
You're not going to bring those three items tomorrow and get those clarified, um, in the final documents, uh, that we issue you here on Friday?
Okay, unless y'all, unless y'all have any more questions?
No.
Well, we got it. All right.
Thank you, Curtis.
Thank you, Curtis.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, okay.
What page to the right of the phone? Okay, so we had, uh, so the change about the door, strike the language about to coordinate with the, uh, between the door manufacturer and the building manufacturer, and he's going to make sure that there's a plug-in, not hardwired, and that the electric is metered separately, was there anything else I don't, that I missed?
Now, when you say metered separately, do you want it for OG&E had, for, the way they've got it in here, where it's, um, we're actually activating as the utility billing company for OG&E for our side of it, or do you want them to have to pay OG&E directly?
I actually kind of like the, the mini-meters.
Okay, the way they've got it now.
We have, the airport pays a master meter and then bills the tenants for the power that they use off of their meter.
What's the advantage? I mean...
Well, everybody didn't have to pay the, the base, like right now on a T-hanger, I pay a minimum of like twenty bucks a month, whether I use a Christie or not.
Okay.
And this way, you only have one base rate, because you only have one metered OG&E, see? So that's twenty-eight dollars theoretically spread through eight hangars, instead of each hangar paying twenty-eight bucks. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I, I was thinking about it coming from the opposite direction, I was thinking, we're the ones putting the money out if we don't get paid back.
Well, the, the other thing it gives you is, uh, it gives you the opportunity for another stream of income.
Yeah.
I mean, because we don't, we don't have to, I mean, I think we'd be silly to sell it at cost, I mean, you, you, there's going to be time taken by the manager to read that, I think there's an opportunity for a very small margin on that as well, to also make up for the fact that the tenants aren't having to worry about paying that bill, it's paid for them, they just have to pay one bill to the airport for rent and electricity.
Well, if you pay your, if you pay your rent annually, you still have a monthly bill of electricity.
You just add that to your fee.
Yeah. We'll build at the same time as...
Yeah, well, that's what I meant.
As long as they're not hangar queens.
I'm certainly not against it, I was just, I, I don't think we have pretty many people out here that are probably, that get way behind on their electric, you know?
No, but I mean, by the time you take away that minimum, I mean, even if you, whatever small amount the board decided to add, if they did, that would be less than the minimum.
Is the minimum the same for the big meter that we're going to pay as would every individual meter?
Everything out here should be commercial, so it's the minimum commercial rate.
Yeah, which is higher.
Yeah, I just, I just wondered if, so, say everybody would be paying, I don't know, what is, twenty-eight dollars, let's say thirty dollars, if we're paying that thirty dollars, and we can just divvy that up between eight hangars?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
The way I'd see that working was on this hangar, let's see, whatever electric, you know, we got the electric bill, we went around and looked at what the readings were each month, and, uh, the, you know, if we're just, uh, zero cause, zero sum gain, we take the bill and multiply it out times the usage of all of them, and say, okay, this hangar used this much, you get that much of the bill.
Yeah, and, and as far as the, the minimum fee, you just divvy that up and consider it part of the rent.
Yeah, I just didn't know if the, since they said that was a big different, I didn't know if it was twice as much.
Yeah, if one big meter is, is more expensive than eight small meters, I would doubt it.
No, I do not, no, I do not believe that's going to be this.
Does the city set up to handle this, this kind of a billing?
Uh, this is going to be a manual...
This will be first?
We're gonna, we're gonna have to go out and we're gonna have to, what would end up happening is that we would have to start with basically a zero meter on everybody, and every month, go back out, go out and read, uh, just like we do water, or you would have to, somebody out here's going to have to read the meter, uh, divide the bill out, and then call down and say, for the electric, um, hangar number one, use this much, hangar number one belongs to...
Phil Boe.
Max McDermott, whoever, and he gets that much of that bill.
Now, he...
And we just, we just, we would send him, we would send out a bill to him the same way we would send out a bill for fuel, uh, for monthly bills, or whatever, it would not look like a...
Utility bill.
A, a utility bill that you normally get, yeah.
Curtis said that that would save many thousands of dollars, but in your opinion, is that the case over...
That's what I would think, if you spend a couple thousand upfront...
Is it worth it?
Man hours and stuff.
Your opinion as far as the amount of time that's going to be spent billing and taking care of all of that?
I haven't put a lot of thought into that. Theoretically, if, these are the only hangars that were doing it that way on, um, theoretically, it should not take any time to do it. If it's done on, you know, the same, you know, soon as we get the bill in, we go out and read that day, we divide it out, um, or actually, we need to coordinate with when they read the meter, so that we have a consistent usage of who's using what during the same billing period.
But if you zero, if you're zeroing the meter, what difference would it make?
Well, you can, but, well...
Even if you missed it a month, you go back, you're just, I mean, you'd get a bill for two months' worth of power versus...
Well, uh, it's...
I can't imagine anybody in a hangar using that much.
We read, we read from the fifteenth, you know, they read it on the fifteenth, and we've been going along, and we've been hitting it that day, you know, and then, for some reason, some month, you, one hangar uses an exorbitant amount of, of electricity, and if we've missed the day, he may get billed for more electricity than what he actually used during the billing period.
But...
I, I don't know that that's a big deal.
Well, I feel like...
It should balance out, but if, if you're not, if you're not coordinating and doing it on the same day, then, um, there's the potential for somebody to get overbilled for electric, or pay for, pay for the electric somebody else used.
But if you charge them...
If we're using, if we have one meter that feeds eight other meters...
Right.
We're only reading those eight meters, we don't care what the big meter says, OG&E's reading that one.
Well, what I'm saying is, is that if, if you're not coordinating today...
You've got to make sure that all that you're being charged for is being paid back, though.
Yeah, but you don't, you don't take the bill and divide it up, you take the unit of electricity...
Right.
And multiply it by what OG&E is charging the airport.
You would take, you would take the bill, that you give for, you'd take the bill, let's say you got a hundred dollar bill from OG&E, you, you would divide that out by the kilowatt-hours that we used that month. And then you would go and read each meter, and whoever, uh, and take the kilowatt-hours that was used that month, and, and multiply that times what the kilowatt-hours you got on your bill, so you can divide the bill out among everybody. And if you're not reading it on the same day as everybody else, there is the potential for one person to pay more of one bill than what they actually should, but over time, that should equal out, level out.
Well, and it gives you a backup, too, where if there was ever a question on the bill that we gave a customer in the T-hanger, you can go back, this is why OG&E billed us on this date, this is what we read on all eight hangars, this is what your portion is. It keeps it consistent, where we're not having to sit here and...
See, and, you know...
But you can't just stay out of it.
You can't do that, because you'd have to read it at the exact minute that they're reading it.
You'd have to, you'd have to be...
It'll even out.
You'd have to be pretty close.
I think it'll even out, I don't think that would matter, there's, there was one outlet called out in there that would be, one or two, that would be on the city side, that were by the panel, and that's just part of code, you've got to have that, an outlet near the, near the panel for service, but I, I don't, I think we're, we're arguing over a couple of dollars at most.
It may not be, and it may not be a big deal at all, I'm just saying, man, I don't know how, I've gotten over it knowing off, off the top of my head how much...
Because we're going to have lights that are running off of the main meter, that the city would be paying anyway, so you're not going to be able to account for every single kilowatt-hour on those eight meters matching up to the main meter, because there's going to be other usage with lights on the outside.
And I, I think the key to it is, after the beginning date, you read on, on or as close to the same day every month.
What's a T, T, T-hanger electric bill run?
I think mine bases at around twenty-five, twenty-eight, and when I put a battery charger on, rationally leave the line on, I can shoot it to thirty-five.
So ten bucks a month without the base, I mean, I don't know about you, but I think if you bill once a quarter, if you got a bill for forty-five dollars for your electric for the quarter...
Why would you complain?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think anybody's going to say, "Well, my God, I can't afford fi, forty-five dollars, I need that once a month."
Yeah, and like I say, I, I've got no idea what a hangar would use, so I, I don't know that it's a big deal at all.
I think Paul's right, I mean, even somebody plugging in heater all the time is probably going to run fifteen to twenty dollars a month during the winter months.
Yeah, most of the pad heaters that fit on them are three hundred watt.
And they shut off usually, yeah, they'll shut off when they're hot, so, or when they get to a certain temp.
And the other T-hangers, you have to coordinate whoever's leaving, when they're going to shut off the meter, and when you're going to turn on, and you have to pay that setup, that conversion, so.
My, my concern is less about the billing, more about the, the man-hours, I mean, somebody has to go read them, and if somebody says, "Hey, I didn't, you know, I haven't been in town for two months, how come I have a bill?" You know, you have to spend the time researching and all that stuff, I know it doesn't sound like, I just think over time, it probably would end up being worth just paying the extra and have an individual metered, everybody...
Depends on how, when it says many thousands of dollars, depends on how much he's talking about. Is it five thousand dollars, or is it twenty thousand dollars?
I wouldn't think you'd take very long to read it.
I don't either, and I, the thing about it, it's another form of revenue for the airport, should, I mean...
Should, did the need arise, you could...
Yeah, should the need arise, you could, you could mark that up a small percentage and have that as income, I mean, it, it should, sure.
Well, the utility bills are regulated, I'm not sure you could function as a utility...
If you go to Winoka and...
Power distributor.
City of Allocut, yeah, I mean, because we do, we do that with water.
Yeah, we, we're a utility, we're a utility company, Alva is a, the Alva Utility Authority is a utility company, we, we do water, so...
And we're not talking about...
Yeah, no, I understand, I just thought that was regulated.
To make sure that we cover that cost and, and make a little should we have to service it down the road, I mean, whatever it is, it's going to be lower than the minimum, so...
He did ways fine, and there's good things and bad things on both sides.
Yeah.
Yeah, and like I say, if it's five thousand dollars to do it on a three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand dollar project, so what? If it's twenty thousand dollars...
It's, it's five thousand dollars that we pay versus money we can make over the next fifty years.
We might need it.
I mean, I know it's only five thousand dollars, but you also give away the opportunity to have another source of income. And I, Terry, I don't think it, I mean, you walk over there and you read eight meters, and you write them down on a pad, and you go back, it's not, I mean, when, when the FOD check is done, that'd just be one of those monthly things, you drive by there and look out the window and read the meters real quick, and...
I mean, it shouldn't take a lot of time to just read eight meters.
As a pilot, I'd rather you charge me ten bucks for the electricity and add five for him to go read it, than pay twenty-eight bucks a month minimum, so that's half, is that what you mean? I'm actually with Todd Holder, but that way, if you've got five bucks a month for him to read it, you're getting forty bucks...
Yeah.
Profit.
The problem with this is we're going to have renters in the other two T-hangers asking to convert, yeah.
We're not putting a much bigger... Well, but, but everything goes to the same point, so it's not impractical to do at some point.
Yeah.
Let's just, I'm, is anybody opposed to leaving it the way it is already in the bid? Let's just read it like it is.
Can we, can we make a motion to approve the bid packet with, with the changes, subject to the changes in the electrical thing?
Should be able to.
And the door.
Are you talking about the rest of the hangars, too?
Yeah.
I've got a couple of questions on the other part. The, uh, we, I mean, I don't know, but on the apron, with the way I read it, they're putting down six inches of concrete, do we really need six inches? Can we get by with four, or not?
I wouldn't go four.
Okay, what do you think?
You could have...
I've got four everywhere, I mean, four supports a lot of weight, but the six will last, depending on, it depends on the weight of the planes that are going, I mean, it's designed for pretty big airplanes.
But you're going to have heavy equipment moving, pushing snow off the ramps, and fuel trucks driving up there.
Okay.
Yeah, fuel truck, loaded fuel truck, and, and in the, down the road, they could get larger, too, I suppose.
Okay, that answers my question. Next one is, I don't think we need to insulate the hangars, I think that's a waste of money. There isn't another hangar on the field unless it's private that's insulated. There isn't another hanger on the field unless it's private that's insulated.
Didn't we talk about that? And we said it was going to be a line item we could strike later if the cost was too excessive?
Uh, Mr. Medien.
Yeah, that was, okay.
So, and I'm not, I, I'm with you, but the other side of it is that an insulated building gives you the opportunity to charge a little more. And it's easier to insulate it now than it would be ever to come back and do it in the future.
That's true. That's for sure.
So.
And that was something that we could strike if it was too expensive.
Okay. Well, that, that answered my question. I have one more. Uh, it specifies a fire extinguisher in a lockable cabinet.
I think that was a code requirement.
That's a code requirement. That's an FAA code requirement.
In a lockable?
I didn't say lockable. Did I read it wrong?
No, that's what I read too, in a lockable, right here. Because we asked, I asked him about that, and he said that was a.
A code.
I think, I think that's a code.
That's a.
I don't mind the fire extinguisher, but the lockable cabinet, why would you ever want to have that locked up?
Well, it's got a glass door.
It's got a glass cabinet.
Oh, a little hammer from the back.
Yeah, right. I guess the people won't swivel.
I mean, it's, it's, so it's not, is it easy to see?
Yeah, that's probably true.
So, yeah, that was.
Seems like an unnecessary expense to me.
Because I, because I, I asked him about, I did too. I asked him about that.
We can't get around it for the code.
I, we agree. The FAA required all hangers, period, to have to have a fire extinguisher.
That's possible, but the way he described it, it was because we had been taking up that international code.
Yeah, well, but I, I mean, I thought I read somewhere that any airport that takes FAA money requires every single building to have a
It could be.
Fire extinguisher.
Possible too. Either way, we have to have it. We can't get rid of it.
Well, that's a good thing. I'm not arguing.
I was on a forum and they were talking about it, and I figured, well, okay. It is a good thing, I mean.
But, but the cabinet seems like a unneeded, unnecessary expense.
Yeah, it says, it says here, uh, steel cabinet for service mount installation with a full, full wire glass vision panel. Provide the cabinet standard color white. Full wire glass.
You can see it, but you can't get at it.
I'm sure it's what, whatever the code is though.
But a full, a wire glass, that's got wire in it, you can't.
Couldn't shatter.
Can't get through that. That's if you get a wire cutter and a hammer.
It's our gentleman.
Yeah. It might be like the, those school door glasses used to have wire in them, but it was, when it shattered, I think it fell out in that shape.
Yeah.
No, so that you couldn't hit it and get through it.
It's not so that you, it is not made in such a manner that you cannot get to it through the glass.
It, I think it breaks that clean, so when you reach in, it doesn't cut you. That's why it's got the wire in there. Don't, I don't guarantee that though.
That's all the questions I've got.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, the fire extinguisher, I understand the lockable cabinet. I don't, why can't it just hang in line?
Yeah, we just.
With a strap on it.
We just put some up and they just had us put one of those latches around it.
Yeah.
Clamps it down to the wall.
It requires you to have three keys.
For the fire extinguisher?
For the fire cabinet.
Can you see, going for a key when you got, if you got a fire?
Nope.
If there's a fire in there, I'm just going to leave.
If I see it's locked, I'm running. About to, exactly. That's right.
I can verify that with fire marshal.
I mean, worst case, just not in the cabinet.
That's, I, I, the amount of that expense is going to be pretty small though.
I mean.
I, I don't know.
I'll bet you, I'll bet you they get four, five hundred dollars for a lockable fire extinguisher cabinet.
I bet they do too.
We bought some stuff. None of it was excessively expensive that the fire department fired anyway.
Probably wasn't FAA specs or Department of Defense.
That's true. But it wasn't the City of Alva Fire Marshal.
That's one of those things, that's a line item thing that can be handled. We don't need to mention that in the motion.
Good deal. Okay. Do we have a motion?
What, I mean, can?
With the one, two, three changes, the door, coordinating the door company and the building company instead of requiring it to be the same, and then, uh, an ability to plug in an emergency generator, are the three changes that I have written.
The motor, the mounting of the motor.
That's what, I said, I just said door, but that's what I was meaning, that the door requirements weren't so narrow.
Yeah. I make a motion that we approve the T-hanger bid specs and authorize with the changes as noted on the electrical. Do I need to itemize those in the motion?
Yeah, let's do it, yeah.
The door ma- one, number one, the door manufacturer should be coordinated with the building manufacturer. Um, that the door motor is, is either, uh, has a plug-in or can be plugged into for emergency use. And that the, uh, door motor can optionally be mounted at the bottom of the door. That's, that's the three correct. And then we authorize the staff to proceed with the advertisement and receiving the bids.
Second?
Help second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the, uh, T-hanger specs and authorize staff to proceed with the advertisement and receiving the bids with the changes noted. Uh, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kenzie?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Washburn?
Yes.
Logston?
Yes.
Okay. That is everything we have on the agenda tonight, so we will be adjourned.